Good evening and welcome to the June 23 meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as part of it.
If there is anyone here in the audience who wishes to record this meeting either by tape or other, please so indicate to the Chair if you would. Seeing none, then we'll move on to our agenda. And our first item is we have two proclamations tonight, and the first one is for Amateur Radio Week. And Brent Putnam is here, who's a member of the group and would like to make some comments. Brent, welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. I am here with the President of the Falmouth Amateur Radio Association, Dick Wickland, and if you wouldn't mind, he has a few statements.
Great. Thank you, Brent. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Thank you, members of the Board. My name is Richard Wickland, Dr. Richard Wickland, and I am President of FARR. I live at 79 Bay Road in North Falmouth. And my call sign is K1MGH. And I've been the President of FARR for about three years now. So we would like to, FARR and myself, our members would like to thank you for considering proclaiming this coming week as Ham Radio Week because at the end of this week, on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, it will become our annual event, which is Field Day, which is a nationwide event for all ham radio operators with some competition about scoring as many points as you possibly can. We would like to invite the public to join us. They're welcome to come in, see what we do, listen in, roam around, have something to eat. And if they want to get on the air, we have what we call a GOTA station, Get On The Air. And you can actually get on the air under our supervision without a license. We have the license, and you can operate under our license. And I would add, an important part of that is that we get bonus points. If the press covers it, we get a bonus point for that. If we have an elected official visit the site at any time on Saturday or Sunday, we get quite a few bonus points. But it does have to be an elected official. So if you'd like to come up and have bacon and eggs, or hamburgers and hot dogs with us, we would love to have a member of the Board of Selectmen come up and visit, see what we do. As I have not said yet, FARR is a nonprofit community service organization, and we provide communication support for things like the Falmouth Road Race, the Cape Cod Marathon, the Wounded Warriors Bike Ride. And we also supply communication support in event of weather emergencies, blizzards and hurricanes. And I can personally tell you that with somebody mentioned in the last meeting, Hurricane Sandy, I spent 36 hours at the shelter at Falmouth High School, myself, in my camper, providing communications from the shelter down to the emergency communications center at the firehouse. So that's an example of some of the things that we do. And I left my wife at home with no electricity when I did it. Okay? Again, that's about all that I want to say, except again, we truly appreciate your support and recognition of our efforts by the Selectmen and the Town of Falmouth. I'd be glad to answer any questions about ham radio that you have before I turn it back to Brent.
Can you use the time of day on setting Sunday at the Cooper Park?
We're going to be starting early afternoon on Saturday, and we will conclude at 1:00 on Sunday afternoon. And we will be there all night, operating. We will be operating a Morse code station, a single sideband station, which is voice. And unfortunately, this year, we will not have a satellite operator, but we also have our GOTA station, and we will also have what we call a VHF station. So we will have four stations there. And we're hoping to get the Boy Scouts out. If you've got young children, you want to bring them by, the kids really get a kick out of getting onto GOTA station and being able to talk to somebody pretty far away. I can tell you, I have personally talked to people in South Korea, Australia, New Zealand, Antarctica, South Africa, all of Europe, quit part of Russia, all the Scandinavian countries. And I've also worked all 50 states in the United States, both on analog and on digital modes of communication. So it's a lot of fun. It's a great hobby. Any other questions I can answer for you?
Sue?
I just want to lend my support. My father was W1 CLG, rather. And the thing to really appreciate is when there's a disaster and all communication is down, I mean, you know how frustrating it is when you can't get someone on your cellphone. These are the only folks that can find out if your loved ones are okay. When there was an earthquake in Managua, Nicaragua, my father was up all night letting people know that, you know, people were safe, or, you know, if they needed supplies. And it's just really an opportunity. They trade cards internationally, so it's really expanding who you know internationally. And we became friends with a priest in Kathmandu. So it's a terrific tradition, and I definitely will try to get there on the weekend, and I full-heartedly support all your efforts.
Just look for me. I'll be up there in my Airstream trailer, come by and knock on the door and tell me who you are, and I will make sure that we get you recognized. Just as a historical comment, I'm the current President of FARR, have been for three years. The first President of FARR was Philip Rand. I don't know if that name rings any bells here, but he was a resident of North Falmouth, and he was the son of the founder of Remington, Rand. And Philip Rand was the man who developed the mechanism of preventing television interference from ham radio operators. Well, it's also very interesting that Philip Rand's house was located on the property where I now live. And Philip Rand was also a, what we call, an Airstreamer. And since I retired about eight years ago, I have done 87,000 miles of traveling in my Airstream. So Philip Rand and I have a lot in common.
I guess.
Any other questions I can answer for you? Again, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
For letting us get up and make comments, and I'll pass it back to Brent.
I provided you all with a brief history or a brief outline of what Field Day is. It's an annual activity that is sponsored by the American Radio Relay League. It is, that is the national organization for ham radio. It's actually, the league is celebrating its 100th anniversary this year. And this event is, really, it's to test our ability to work in emergencies and in difficult situations. We set up portable antennas, use portable equipment, and as Dick noted, we're there for 24 hours operating. Unbeknownst to Dick, uh, Dick, excuse me, I will have my handheld satellite arrangement. I'll have that with us, and so hopefully we can make a satellite contact as well. Finally, I just wanted to show you all, a lot of folks, when they think of ham radio, they think of this, which is a Morse code key, and it sends what we call a continuous wave, what everybody knows as Morse code. Well, that was state-of-the-art 100 years ago when the league was started. These days, this is state-of-the-art, and this is what we use. This particular radio not only allows me to use amateur radio from my car, where I can talk to other hams if I was going across the country, but it also allows me to use satellites. It also allows me to use the Internet to reach out, connect to a, what's called a repeater, which receives the signals, transmits them across the Internet, and retransmits them on another part, in another part of the world. So we've come a long way from this to this, and ham radio is still relevant today. So we just wanted to share that with you. Thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you. Nice to see you again, Brent. Yeah. Nice to see you again.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I ask one question?
Yeah.
I was just curious, from whence the term "ham" and "ham radio" is derived?
My understanding, and I don't know if Dick has a different story, but my understanding is that way back when radio first started, today, Dick mentioned his call sign, mine is W1NCH. It's assigned by the Federal Communications Commission, and we have slices of frequency, if you will, that we can operate on. Many people are aware of, say, the FM band or the AM band. Well, we have ham bands, which are sections of radio or frequency that we can use. Well, way back when it all began, there was no such governing body, there were no such differentiations between who operates where, and everybody sort of crowded in together, amateurs and professionals alike. The professionals, of course, did not take kindly to having amateurs using the same frequencies that they were using, and they would often call them "hamfisted," because if you're using a telegraph key, you're using your fist, in essence. And so the term "hamfisted" was used as an insult, but it was quickly adopted by the amateurs as a sign of endearment, if you will, so we are called "hams."
Interesting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Someone want to read? You're going to read the proclamation?
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, if you would.
Do we need a motion to?
This is. This is the motion.
This is the motion, when you read it.
Whereas the Town of Falmouth has more than 210 licensed amateur radio operators who have demonstrated their value in public assistance by providing emergency radio communications, and whereas these amateur radio operators donate these services free of charge to the town in the interest of the citizens of the town as well as the world, and whereas these amateur radio operators are on alert for any emergency of Cape Cod and practice their communication skills during the American Radio Relay League Incorporated Field Day exercise, and whereas this year's Field Day exercise will take place on July 28th and 29th, 2014. June 28th, excuse me, June 28th and 29th, 2014. Now, therefore, we as Selectmen of the Town of Falmouth do hereby declare and proclaim Week of June 22nd to the 28th, 2014, as Amateur Radio Week. In recognition of this importance, of this important emergency, prepare this exercise and call upon all citizens to pay appropriate tribute to the amateur radio operators in the Town of Falmouth and witness thereof, we have hereunto set our hand and cause the great seal of the Town of Falmouth to be affixed.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous. The motion carries. Thank you very much. We have another proclamation here for Senate President Murray. She is leaving the Senate the end of this year because the term of President is term limited to eight years, and she has chosen not to run for reelection. And there's a group in town that the Falmouth Democratic Committee is holding a dinner in her honor. And this is a proclamation for the Selectmen. If you would so read.
Whereas Senate President Teresa Murray was first elected to the Senate with the Plymouth and Barnstable District in 1992, and whereas Plymouth and Barnstable was redistricted to include the Town of Falmouth in 1994, and whereas in March 2007, Senator Teresa Murray became the first woman elected to the President in Massachusetts Senate, and whereas Senate President Teresa Murray has been the driving force to pass legislation in areas of children's mental health, transportation, economic development, and small business, education, prescription, drug abuse, healthcare reforms, and much more, and whereas while Senate President Teresa Murray successfully accomplished legislation on many state issues, she always fought for and accomplished significant legislation to meet the needs of her district, especially Falmouth. And now, therefore, let it be known that the citizens of Falmouth are deeply grateful for your leadership, diligence, and inspiration, and thoughtful endeavors on their behalf, and recognize that Falmouth is a better place because you were there for them. And witness, therefore, we, Mary Pat Flynn, Doug Jones, Rebecca Moffett, Susan L. Moran, and Samuel H. Patterson, as Selectmen of the Town of Falmouth, by far invested in us, have hereto set our seal, our hand, and cause the great seal of Falmouth to be fixed on its 23rd day of June 2014. So move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous. The motion carries. For signatures. So now, from proclamations, we will move on to public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Yes.
Good evening. I'm Joyce Lohman with the Artisans Market. We have been trying to work with the planning group, the working group, on trying to continue holding the artist market, which has been held on the town square for the last eight years. And I know there have been some difficulties. We did take the advice of the planning group and went back and looked at other spots, which were not appropriate at this time due to safety reasons. We were dismayed to learn that the Board of Selectmen would not hear the new information that we had gathered. We've held the art market, as I said, over eight years, and we've obtained numerous letters of support from the merchants who were directly affected, specifically the dentist, the lawyer, the stamp collector, the bookstore, the insurance agency, and a number of restaurants. They all wrote letters in support of our holding the market, continuing to hold the market at the town square on Tuesdays. They really felt that we were an added advantage and not a disadvantage to them, that any parking issues that were issues in the past that we have sufficiently resolved. All the vendors now park down at St. Barnum's Church, so there are no vendors that park in this parking lot here on Tuesdays. So we've really tried to be a good citizen and respond to any of the issues that have been brought to our attention. We were only asking for the same consideration that the farmers group also received in continuing to hold the farmers market in downtown Falmouth during the summer. It's, we were on Tuesdays, the farmers' market was on Thursdays, so not to congest it even further. We were disappointed that we weren't given the same consideration to be, to have opportunity to add value to the town by other reseeding. We've never had a problem, there's never been any difficulty in the town market square there. We were certainly open or receptive to providing any services that the town might have needed, but we weren't given that opportunity.
You just have a few seconds left.
Yeah. I understand that. So what we're looking for is just the opportunity to even continue, if this area here is not conducive to that, to look to hold the market at the Pagnunin Park, and that we would certainly be willing to do the same issues of helping the town as the farmers' market is open to doing. But this is the livelihood of 25 artisans, and we do not sell anything in any of the stores on Main Street or anywhere here in Falmouth. These are all artisans, it's all handmade items. And if the use of a public space, this public space is not for art and music, then I don't know what it would be for. So we would greatly appreciate your reconsideration because we have explored all of our other options.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would care to speak on a public comment? Yes, Sue.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, my name's Carl Sheffer. I live in East Falmouth. I'm one of the artisans, I'm a photographer that participates in the art market. I have for a couple of years. And it seems to me it's a different win-win for the town. For many of us, it's the only place that we participate. People that come here as tourists seem to love it. They leave with memories of the town. I think it adds to the image of downtown. I just can't imagine why it wouldn't be viewed as a very favorable thing for the town. And I hope you'll consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Donald.
Malcolm Donald from West Falmouth. I'm a Falmouth Historical Commissioner, but I'm not here speaking for the commission. I'm speaking for myself tonight. But I am speaking about historical preservation. I sat through the previous joint meeting, and I saw a common thread about historical preservation. It opened with what Mary Pat Flynn said, how the focus in town needs to be on redevelopment of what we have. And I have to agree there. The second commonality, we talked about, your joint meeting talked about the planning scope of Davis Straits. I understand from the Cape Cod Commission that the historical resources in the area will be considered. I hope the resources, I hope you see that the resources are still there for them to consider, and specifically, I mean, I'm talking about the Davis House and the Zelensky Lawrence House. You, the planning board went on to talk about the local comprehensive plan and how they're developing it. Well, in the current plan, there is a whole section on historical preservation, and it talks about the 330-year history of the town.
You have about 20 seconds left.
Okay. And the importance of...
Sorry.
The importance of historic and the continuity of ongoing generations. There's two sentences there, real to the point. To tie this up, we have a tragic flaw in the government process in town regarding historical buildings. We have, different boards are limited to specific facets. They cannot consider another facet in relationship to their facet, and there is no overarching body that can look at the total picture. And citizens are frustrated and...
Your time is up, Mr. Donald.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else under public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Diane Regis, also about the art market. I think what was failed to be said was, we're really looking, again, only for one more year. We've looked into Gus Canty and other places, and Gus Canty seemed to be good, except not this year because of the rolling hills. Also, I wonder if it's possible that we could have some consideration, or if you could tell us whether we'd be considered again, because time is running out, and we would like to start in July. We're looking for nine, nine days between July and August.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? No? Okay. Thank you all very much for your comments. We move on to the minutes of the meeting of June 9th, the public session. The Chair will entertain a motion, with or without amendments?
With or without amendments. Move approval of the minutes of June 9th, public session?
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? None opposed? The motion carries. The, the minutes of executive session for June 9th, 2014, that you, I think you had a minor change to make in that paragraph. Did everyone, I think everyone saw your change. Is that correct? No, I'm talking to Ms. Murray.
Right. I didn't receive any response back, so...
Oh. So then, did you receive it? No, you didn't receive it. All right. Then we'll hold these minutes till the next time, because you have a correction, and we want to make sure that the change, it's a very simple change, but it needs to be done. So a motion to continue these till the next meeting?
So move. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous.
Madam Chair, just to clarify, for the artist group, it is not something we can't discuss tonight?
No, we can't discuss it tonight.
And so if you're looking for an answer tonight, we can't give it to you.
Will we be discussing it?
Tonight, we will not be discussing it.
At any time?
We don't know. We'll have to, they'll have to take it up. Next, a report and discussion with the Golf Advisory Committee. Yes, Mr. Robert Young.
Robert Young, Precinct 5, and also Chairman of the Golf Advisory Committee, Chairman Flynn, and Board Members Management. Before I begin with my report, I'd like to point out that I have a considerable number of members of the Golf Committee and the golf course staff with us tonight. Recently, the Golf Committee has had a series of meetings, regular golf meetings and public forum last week to discuss the issue...
Bob, could you talk a little louder? Yeah. No, that won't help you, but...
Okay. To discuss the issue of the contract, our current lease with Billy Casper Golf is in its second five-year phase, and it ends on December 31st this year. And so in order for the town, the golf course and the community to move forward, we've come up with some issues that we'd like to discuss and bring to your attention. And so I crafted this report. There's some detail attached to it, which I won't get into, but I would like to read the first page and a half of the report and then answer questions. Our report to the Board tonight on Falmouth Country Club centers on the renewal process that will take place regarding the golf club and its operation in the future. On December 20, on December 31st, 2014, our agreement with current course operator Billy Casper Golf land. In 2004, Falmouth Town Meeting approved the acquisition of Falmouth Country Club, 27 holes, and adjacent 61 acre parcel of land at a cost of approximately $15 million. This acquisition was made with no increase to the tax base, with a 30-year bond issued by the town along with a $3 million payment to the town from the 300 Committee. The 300 Committee really made this happen. The model recommended by the Golf Course Acquisition Committee, which is different from our Advisory Committee, the original Acquisition Committee at that time was to hire a professional manager to operate the golf course. With Selectmen's approval, this type of operation was implemented with the hiring of Billy Casper Golf for the 2005 season. Here we are now, 2014. It's hard to believe we've had that course for nine and a half years. The course has been operated in a professional manner, and the resulting 10-year public-private partnership has had many successes. A public golf course in top-notch condition, our superintendent is right here, and he can take a lot of credit for that.
Becky.
With best use practices maintained, membership rates and daily fees structured at a level to make golf affordable to residents. Open space has been maintained, and we have achieved an Audubon certification as well, something we can be very proud of. I think it might be the only public course on the Cape with one. Revenue received by the town from operations along with the 300 Committee payments have met all debt service to date, with no request to the town for funding, so they haven't come after us. The original vision by the town in having a professional manager with experience in operating a public golf course was a good one. A well-maintained golf course, providing affordable golf to both residents and visitors, has resulted. That's just part of it. I mean, they've been great over there. They've helped our high school, there's junior programs, there's leagues over there. There's opportunities for people in the morning to go over and take lessons, so there's a lot there for people to use. When moving forward in 2015, the Golf Advisory Committee is making the following recommendations to Selectmen for the golf course operation. And I've got five listed here. Maintain and build upon our unique market position. Maintain golf course superintendent association standards. Maintain and improve environmental stewardship. Keep our Audubon certification. Leave the property in better condition at the end of the new lease term. And continue with a professional operator by an increased income and improved operational efficiency. I know that's a lot, and at your convenience, you can see some detail that I have attached that will explain those five statements a little more. A few more things to cover here. Additionally, there are several capital needs that will need to be addressed in order to maintain the high, same high quality of golf with amenities that we have had thus far. Our original 18-hole irrigation system must be replaced. That comes up every year when we make the report to Selectmen, and it's held together, but it does need to be addressed at this time when we go forward. The system is 40-plus years of age and has deteriorated. Additionally, clubhouse improvements, including a new roof. It is my understanding the Bill and Commissioner has issued a report recently on the roof, and it needs to be replaced. There have been some leaks. If you want to call it a complaint, the main issue that some of the golfers have is that there's not enough of a food source there after they play their round of golf. There's an alcoholic license, there's regular drinks, but there's not much in the way of hot sandwiches, as there's no grill. An expanded food and beverage service made available. The current food service is somewhat limited due to the facilities on hand, and this should be upgraded. Outside of the clubhouse, the parking lot also should be resurfaced, as the current driveway and parking areas need work. And in closing, these capital improvements may be addressed with the issuance of an RFP when moving forward with a new operator's agreement with greater terms than our current 10-year lease. Selectmen may consider a 20-year lease with an initial 10-year period, and then two successive five rollover terms included. With an expanded lease of 20 years, the operator selected will be willing to put more funding into the capital projects, which will benefit the course. I think if we go forward with a 10-year, as we have now, five-on-five, the new operator may not want to put in as much as they would. If they had it for longer, longer term, they may be willing to put a little bit more into the golf course. That's a summary of our report. There are details, as I mentioned, and I can take any questions, and the operators are here also if there are any questions from the Selectmen.
Any questions? Okay. Becky?
Is it the Billy Casper Golf? They came in and gave us a, an update?
Yes.
In the spring, I guess?
It wasn't too long ago, yes.
And is this the same group?
Yes.
That we're talking about?
They've had the lease for 10 years.
And they're interested in a renewal?
I'd have to check with town management, but I think it has to go to a public trust for proposals.
But Casper would be interested?
I know they would be interested, yes.
Sir?
The actual funding of upgrades to the irrigation system and the new roof, are you planning to put that as part of the RFP? Or are you going to expect, are you going to be coming to town meeting for funds for that purpose?
I think that could be addressed in the RFP, depending on the length of the term, you could put some stipulations in there that you may want that addressed. I don't know if we come to town meeting asking for money for that. That might be, fall under a capital plan that the town has, and I don't think that is in there right now. There may be another request with regards to the irrigation system, I've heard, but as far as going to town meeting, I don't think so, Mr. President.
Well, we have on our agenda later tonight, a request, to send an application to the CPC for funding for the irrigation system, that comes up later on our agenda.
That's, that's the top of the list, that particular issue.
And likely, if the irrigation system were taken care of, these other capital needs could be taken within the RFP.
I would, I would think there are less money, so they could be handled that way, yes.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Did you have more you wanted to say, Bob?
Not, I'm, I'm all set, I don't know if the golf course operators wanted to say anything, or how much time that you wanted for us.
Matt, did you want to say something?
How much time do we have? I mean, I don't know. I didn't talk.
Yeah, a few minutes, a couple of minutes.
Sometimes I talk a little too much. Yeah, my name's Matt Burgess, I'm the general manager at Falmouth Country Club, this is my sixth season, so I've been there for quite a while. And to answer your question, Billy Casper is definitely interested in, would want to come back. I just wanted to kind of give a little overview of kind of what the last nine and a half years has been. We're very proud of our ACE training, which is our in-house customer service training. We offer, we have mystery shops that come in, and secret shop all of our facilities, we have 160 facilities nationwide. And just to kind of give you a background, when Falmouth was actually hired Billy Casper back in 2005, there was only about 40 golf courses in our portfolio, and we've grown to 160, and believe me, Falmouth Country Club is definitely used as an example. We use, another program that we use is guest track, our data capture, we have about 45,000 valid emails and addresses that we've attained over the last nine years. We'd like to track our guests, receive their feedback, track behavior, measure guest behavior and their rates, their habits, frequency and many other metrics. And we solicit feedback from our guests with our 1-800 number that's posted all around the clubhouse, thank you emails that we send out to our guests, contact us, and links on our website. Geographical and socio-economic data, again, it's very easy to get with a huge database. And we use our price optimization that we used Golf Now and Golf Switch, our own website and many other third-party companies to try and get as many emails, I mean, get as many rounds at the facility as we possibly can. We've had a lot of creative programming in the last nine years. We own the largest golf-centric PR firm in the world, I don't know if a lot of you have ever heard of Buffalo Communications, but it's the largest PR firm in golf, and it is owned by Billy Casper Golf. We, in the last year, we've taken on our own in-house design firm to create our own campaigns, graphic artwork and web design. Back when I first started with the company, you know, if we were having tournaments or different events, it was just a fancy Word document that I built on site. Now, we have some pretty really nice graphics that we use through our own marketing team. Our programming at the club is very focused on community and our guests and our residents. All our programming is done with our residents in mind first. It's a partnership that we totally appreciate, and we definitely take advantage of trying to give our guests, I mean, our resident guests, the biggest discount we possibly can. If you look at our resident rates, they're cheaper than all of the area golf courses, and we're proud of that. And all of our retention-based programs are, like, the example I've used many times is, many of us have all bought cell phones, whether it's Verizon or AT&amp;T, they'll do anything to get you as a customer, but once they got you, the discounts are off and they got you. We not only try and get new, new guests to play our course, but we reward current guests with very, very good offers. Player development programs, growing the game and community involvement. Kids play free, we were one of the first golf courses in all Billy Casper and probably in a lot of the country, that kids play free at Falmouth Country Club on the nine-hole course with a paying adult. Not many places can say they do that. We partnered up with the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce, Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce, Falmouth Commodores, Falmouth High School, both men and ladies teams both play at our golf course, Mashpee uses our course from time to time, Morse Pond does their after-school program, the Rec Center is where we do all of our programs, and we even started using, the Mashpee Rec Center was using our facility as well. Get Golf Ready and Golf for Women are two huge PGA, USGA programs to try and attract new golfers to the game. At a very discounted rate, it's $99 for five lessons, for two-hour lessons, I mean, it's, the idea is to really try and go after new golfers. Women on Course is a huge lifestyle, women's lifestyle event is to take the competitiveness out of golf, and try and bring it back to a fun, fun thing, that's why we're all doing. But Billy Casper Golf bought that a year ago, and it's a nationwide program, and we promote it heavily at the golf course. Bucky can attest to this, BCG Green and Audubon International. What Bob said, we are in fact the only public golf course on Cape Cod that is Audubon certified. We're one of only three in the entire state, and the only other golf course on Cape Cod that even has an Audubon certification is the Hyannis Pork Club, so we're in pretty good company with them. And BCG Green is an in-house program that we do at Billy Casper Golf to try and reduce our carbon footprint. Bucky can attest that through the years, they've actually done a lot of groundwater testing at Falmouth Country Club, and they've determined that the water actually leaving the golf course is cleaner than it was coming in, so we, we're very proud of that. Capital improvements to date, 2010, when we had our renewal, we put $120,000 into the golf course. We rebuilt the driving range, we finally got air conditioning in the clubhouse, we did a lot of bunker work, all-new furniture in the clubhouse, new TVs, new golf carts, you know, put a lot of money into it. And I'd say this year, Bucky can attest to this, he's been at Falmouth for 29 years, right now, the golf course is in probably the best shape it's ever been in, and we just hope that, you know, with the irrigation system, clubhouse improvements, the golf course will continue to be in great shape, and we'll have a nice facility for years to come, and hopefully, we can be a part of it. So, if anyone has any questions, I'm here, Bucky's here.
Thank you.
Anyone, yeah.
How does this procedure go? I mean, I understand what they're asking for, but I don't know what, what's the next step?
No, they're just giving us the report.
That's, it's only a report, there's no vote or anything at that time.
No, they're just, it's just the, we heard a presentation from Billy Casper.
Yeah.
Along with Matt, what, like you said, in the spring, but this is our advisory committee that we appoint to represent us in the, in the management of the golf course, and so, that's what we're hearing tonight.
We will have to make a vote at some point as to whether to stay with a private organization running it, or a municipal organization running it.
Heather wants to make a statement.
There, there are multiple things happening at the same time. The golf advisory committee's report and recommendations of the core values of the property, those ultimately the board should take a good look at and support or amend or advise, those would serve as the core values for any comparative evaluation or analysis of a management strategy. The management strategy could be the issuance of an RFP for a third-party management company, which is the path that we took 10 years ago. We're working to develop that RFP now for the board's consideration. At the same time, you'll have some analysis of the market position of the course, what anticipated revenues are, those of course would necessarily be confidential, they relate to the disposition of real property, which is the RFP for a lease. So, there will be a lot of information made available to the board in the coming weeks as we move forward to prepare to make management decisions in the period, fall period prior to the lease expiring at the beginning of next, next calendar year.
The golf, the golf advisory committee had their annual meeting last week, and both Heather and Julian and I attended that meeting, and it was very well-attended, I thought, by members of the club, who had a lot of input into what it's like to play at Falmouth Country Club, and what some of the issues are, which you have addressed, particularly the irrigation system, which is a big issue, I know, for the club, but also the, the availability, the way the course is managed, the, the degree to which the people who golf there are very happy and very satisfied with the club, at least that's what I got from attending your meeting.
We got a lot of public golf pickings.
There was a lot of good, positive public comment, yes, at the meeting. So, so your core values, I think the biggest thing is the accessibility of the course to, to anybody in the town who wishes to play golf at a reasonable rate. And, and I noticed there are always people at the driving range, I mean, I go by there a lot, because I use the backroads, and I always see people there in the driving range and playing there, so it's really a huge asset for the town and for people who, who either want to learn or who are already play, it's, it's a great place to go.
Any other questions from the board?
Anybody else? No? Well, thank you, Matt.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. Is anyone else on your committee, want to make any comments? No? Okay, thanks for...
That's all I do. A couple of us are going off the committee, so you guys...
Well, we have, just to mention, we have some new information from town council on which committees in the town are subject to the term limits, and it might be possible that the golf advisory committee is one that is not subject, but we want to review that more thoroughly before we make any final statements, and the board needs to discuss it. But it appears that there's a, there are some committees that are and some that are not. So, hopefully, you're in the, in the not category, and you can stay on, because you've all been very valuable members of the advisory committee, I must say. Okay. Anybody else, anyone in the audience like to comment on the club? Then we will move on to the next section of our agenda, which is licenses under the summary of actions. The first is a request for a three, for three one-day liquor license for the Silver Beach Improvement Association for July 19th, August 2nd, and August 30th.
These are from the hours of 5:00 PM until 12:00, is that correct?
Yes, from 5:00 PM to 12:00 AM.
Those three Saturdays?
Mm-hmm.
I would move approval?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? None opposed, the motion carries. Now we will move to administrative orders. The first is approve the payment of the Emerald House repairs from the Emerald House Fund. And you can say hold if you wish to hold any of these. Authorize the town manager to enter into a new three-year service agreement with Vestas, I think we should hold that. The third is execute a release of the guarantee of revenue to clear land titles on Katy Hatch Road. This is, just to explain this, this is a longstanding agreement that, from many years ago, when, when water, water mains were put on Katy Hatch Road, and way, way back then, the, the process was that the people who lived there had to put up a revenue bond in order to ensure that the town would be paid for putting in the water mains, and nothing has really, there's been no closure on that. So, what this is, all those payments have been made in full, and now, what, what town council is asking us to do is to actually release that guarantee of the revenue, because it's all been cleared, and then those deeds can be modified, as they should be, to reflect that at the registry of deeds, so that's what that is.
In 1957.
Right, goes back a long way. Sometimes you have to go back to the vault to find things that have to be cleaned up. Next is approve grant applications to the CPC and authorize the town manager to submit and sign support letters. And these grant applications will be for the Village Green fence replacement, for the West Falmouth tennis court replacement.
Hold.
To repair fencing around athletic fields. Anybody want to hold that? Replace the irrigation system at Falmouth Country Club.
Yeah, this one.
And the West Falmouth dock and parking area repair project. Okay, then let's go back to those that we do not hold. The Emerald House repairs, the guarantee of the land titles, and the, on the CPC, the Village Green, the fencing around athletic fields, and the irrigation system, is there a motion to approve?
Approve.
Oh, and the West Falmouth dock.
Approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? None opposed, the motion carries. So, let's go back to the three-year service agreement with Vestas. Ms. Moffett, you held that?
No, I didn't hold Vestas.
Oh, you did?
I hold the West Falmouth tennis court.
Oh. Did somebody hold the one?
You had suggested, but I think there was...
Oh, I suggested it, asking, that's right, for you to make some comment about that.
Certainly, Madam Chair, thank you. As the board will recall, the town's three-year maintenance agreement with Vestas for the two town wind turbines is expiring, and what is proposed is a, an extension of, an expansion of this, of these three-year agreements for an additional three years, in the event that, working with town council, by the way, in the event that any action by a court would eliminate the operation of the turbines, this agreement accommodates that with an adjustment in payments. The amount would be $70,125 per turbine, with adjustments for the Consumer Price Index annually, and certainly recommend the board's favorable consideration for us to continue to operate those turbines in a responsible, businesslike manner.
And move approval of authorize the town manager enter a three-year Vestas agreement with Vestas.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? None opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you.
So, now we'll go to the West Falmouth tennis court replacement.
The only reason I said to hold that was, if any of you noticed in the email that there's concern about the North Falmouth tennis court, and a photo was also shared with us, and I just didn't know if there's to, has there been any discussion with anyone concerning North Falmouth, or is this just, it's just coming up tonight?
Certainly, Madam Selectman, the, I did see the same email, I, I may be in error, but I was thinking that was in West Falmouth as well, as opposed to North.
It's North Falmouth.
So, I, apparently I stand corrected. That, the normal maintenance and erection of the, the appurtenances on the tennis court are overseen by Rocky Gomes and his crew, I don't know, Rocky, if you have any, had a chance to look at that, since that just came to our attention today, but since Rocky is with us, Madam Chair, if he might make a few comments, thank you.
Yeah, I haven't looked, I didn't see that email today, but I do know the condition of that court in North Falmouth. It's not as bad as the one in West Falmouth. The one in North Falmouth, we believe we're going to be able to take, to do some of the maintenance that it requires this year on the North Falmouth court, so it's really important that we get this, this West Falmouth one done. It's far worse than any court we have, so, that's, but, but we did grade them all, we did look at every court in Falmouth, so...
I believe what concerns is that the West Falmouth one actually has major problems with the surface, the North Falmouth, the nets are in bad shape.
Well, we, we do have new nets, they just came in the other day, those will be going up, and, but also, there's a, there's a surface issue, it, it needs to be repainted, so once again, once it warms up a bit, we'll get out there and we're going to take a crack at doing it ourselves, and I, I think we'll be fine with, you know, putting the texture down and everything, so, and then they should be happier, definitely happy with the crack repair that we'll do and everything, so, I believe we'll be good for a few more years on that one, but West Falmouth really, really needs to be done now, it's really bad.
So, if anything, the North Falmouth one's going to happen faster, with some repair than the West Falmouth one.
Right.
Because we may be doing the North Falmouth in a few weeks.
Well, and also, the, this is just an application to the CPC, this doesn't necessarily mean that the CPC is going to approve it, yet, we're just asking them to approve these projects.
Yeah, and the North Falmouth one is a much smaller court, so, you know, for, like I said, if we're successful doing that, then we may be able to carry it to other courts, but we're going to try it right there, and I think we'll be fine, like I said, doing that one, so, there will be a change down there soon. that one, so there will be a change down there soon.
Good.
Okay?
Thank you, Rocky.
Thank you. There's a positive quick answer.
Yeah.
I would move including the West Falmouth tennis court replacement in the letters being sent to the CPC.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None opposed? The motion carries.
Madam Chair, can I make one comment?
Sure.
And I appreciate the board, your patience. Having Rocky Gomes with us, I think it's an opportunity to remind everyone of the many moving parts that Rocky and his crews have to accommodate in Parks and Recreation, particularly getting ready for the busy summer season that we're now in. And, you know, another great example is extraordinary work they've done on Pigman Park. I think all of us have seen the performing stage, particularly with the great musical and arts event over the weekend, and the extraordinary, extraordinary quality put into the, to the work there. And from time to time, there are some catch-up items, and the item that Selectman Moffett brings up, that I'd seen the email, I think, from Selectman Moran as well today, on the North Falmouth court. My mistake, I was thinking it was West Falmouth, but it's an indication of the great number of activities and areas that Rocky and his crews have to cover, so we appreciate it very much, and gives us an opportunity to, for me to acknowledge Rocky and his crews as town manager personally, and Rocky, thanks for jumping right on that as soon as it comes to your attention and acknowledging that we'll take care of it, which is, I know, standard operating procedure for Rocky, so thank you for, to the board for raising that as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And an opportunity for us to thank Rocky and his department and his crew for all he does, to keep our town looking beautiful, and you do. Thank you. Okay, the next item is to authorize the town manager to issue the eco toilet letters. And this is going to be, I think, more of a discussion than just-
Yeah, Madam Chair, maybe a couple of comments. The board in your packet has a copy of draft letters that would be going out to the neighborhood affected by the potential eco toilet opportunities, and we have representatives from our Water Quality Management Committee here. These are, represent communications that will need to go out to that neighborhood. They also connect with an item on your agenda later this evening, which are the eco toilet regulations for eco toilet exemption. So in other words, the, under the summary of action item for administrative orders, with the board's concurrence, these letters, and this is a, very close to the final draft of it, and I appreciate the able work of the Water Quality Management Committee in assisting and packaging that so that we cover all the bases, to timely notify residents that this is an opportunity if they wish to partake in it, to pursue the eco toilet exemption and therefore be exempt from the betterment in the Little Pond area. So we're asking the board's concurrence in transmitting those letters timely to the neighborhood to, for those who would want to take advantage of it.
Yeah, there are three letters here, I think, as you know. The first is just a general letter to the property owners. The second is the notice of the betterment exemption program, that if they, if they apply and they're eligible for any of the exemption programs, how they go about doing that. And then the third letter is the, are the steps, actually, to accomplish an exemption. And it was pointed out to me that there are still a number of people who live in the Little Pond area who may not be really up to date, may, they may be summer people, they haven't been here, they haven't been to any of the programs, or they may be just property owners who rent their properties and don't live here, so have not been here to participate in any of all the public information meetings that the Water Quality Management Committee has had over the last several months. So I expect that when some people get these letters, that there will be maybe some consternation or some, certainly a lot of questions, and I think we just need to be prepared to be able to deal with whatever happens as a result.
In the letter you have, Julian, it talks about the two mayes, about what the Selectman may make this a 30-year plan and may do little or no interest. We do have to make that decision at some point. Is there, can we make that decision before we send this letter out, or can we at least in this letter say, and this decision will be made by a certain time? I'm just still concerned about these unknown things out there that people need to know.
Great question. Selectman Jones, my understanding is that you're required to hold a public hearing, a betterment public hearing, and we do make reference to that at some point in this letter. And that is, would be part and parcel of the decision you would make following all the input you receive at that public hearing. So that's why we were a little bit cautious, reserving the Selectman's authority to make those decisions, but giving you the opportunity to hear the public comment in advance, and that would be later this year, prior to finalizing this whole package.
Anybody have any questions or comments about the letters? Eric Garcia, do you have any comments you want to make? No?
Yeah, I guess, still on that question, yes. The sentence says, these measures will reduce your annual betterment payments, but the estimates we've given, I thought, were based on actually 30 years and no interest. I thought that the estimates of the $25,000 being down to $17,000 was actually the best-case scenario, not 20-year, 2%.
That's my understanding as well, and I would ask Eric Garcia if you would have any comment confirming that.
Whereabouts do you see that? Oh, right here.
So the $17,000.
Okay. So the idea is there's a betterment amount that is related to the capital cost divided by the number of units. The amount paid annually will change depending on whether it's 20 or 30, and zero or two or whatever. And so that's, that's what the-
Yep. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? So-
I just wonder, is there any community forum planned? I thought the one that, I know Julian and Part ran it, I believe it was Tea Ticket, was just very well received and appreciated by the community, so I was just curious if there were any similar plans for public forums.
We don't have any specific plans for a follow-up forum. If the board would prefer that we have an additional forum, we're happy to do that. You know, the one item that we do affirm is the betterment public hearing that the board will be holding and welcoming. We'll be notifying the neighbors of that, of course, and welcoming their participation and questions at that time, so we can proceed with additional forum reforms if the board would so determine.
Is there, is there a date yet for that?
We have not set a date for the betterment hearing as yet.
Is there a drop-dead date?
We do have a tentative drop-dead. Eric, can you comment on that?
I think that Eric Turgen, increasing one Water Quality Committee, by October 15th, the final design will be complete, and there'll be a dollar figure attached to it. So once you have that dollar figure, you can then proceed to get into the betterment issue.
Okay. Jerry?
Regarding the next steps, one of the things that were deliberated was whether the Selectman wanted to go forward and sponsor something like this, which is entirely doable. The other thing is, I know at least one civic association has, is sponsoring an event in August in a timely manner with the annual meeting, and I know I've offered to attend. A lot of quality members couldn't attend. So that's two options. Let the civic associations that know their members know the timing, try to sponsor it, and then we support it by our attendance.
Which, is that Tea Ticket Civic Association?
It was the Maravista Heights.
Or the Maravista? They have their summer meeting anyway.
And I'm scheduled for the August, whatever the August date is.
Yeah. They usually have it at the yacht club. The Maravista, Falmouth Heights Civic Association, yeah. That's, that would be a good opportunity to get on their agenda, perhaps.
Well, I know Jerry already is.
Oh, you already are.
And we're happy to participate as well. Madam Chair, I should mention, unlike the previous forum, which we held, this mailing will go to every property owner. So everyone will personally be notified through this mailing with the board's concurrence this evening of this entire process. So it is our hope, as we've noted, that anyone who may have been missed heretofore will at least review this mailing and become more apprised about it.
There's no more discussion? The chair will entertain a motion.
I move to authorize town manager to issue the eco toilet letters.
Second.
These are draft, right?
These are, no, these are the letters. These are, unless, if you, if there's anything you want to modify, now's the time. No? There's a second?
Second.
Did I hear a second? Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None opposed? The motion carries. Great job. Thank you both. We're not done yet. Yes, we are, with that one. The notice of intent for the stormwater grant. Eric, is this is, who, Sia? I saw, did I saw Betsy a few minutes ago? Yeah, she's here. This is not your grant, right?
This is Sia's grant.
This is Sia's grant.
I'll hope her will what she needs.
Okay. All right, Sia, it's all yours.
I'm Sarah Carr Plus. I'm the Water Quality Technical Consultant to the DPW and the Water Quality Committee, and this is actually an opportunity for the town, so it's not really my grant.
Right.
And what it is, is a statement of interest. The Environmental Protection Agency is interested in identifying sites in south-facing estuaries that would be appropriate to demonstrate best management practices for stormwater mitigation. In some ways, they wrote this for the town of Falmouth. And so they've put it out. Eric and Betsy were on a conference call, and there was only one other town that actually was on that call, so there's a very good chance that we have a shot at getting selected. And if we are selected, the town, the Environmental Protection Agency will pay for the full cost of design, permitting, and installation of what's called a BMP or a best management practice for remediating the nutrients caused by stormwater runoff going into coastal ponds. So it's something that was on the wish list for Article 17 back in 2011 for, to look at stormwater, and so this would be a way for the EPA to actually fund such a project. So the vote from the, so there's no cost to the town. The vote from the Selectman would be to allow us to submit a statement of interest and propose some sites that could work for this project.
Great.
The only commitment is that we maintain a kiosk advertising what we've done.
That's right. A kiosk and, and the actual storm drain system.
Do we ever refuse? When someone else wants to pay for it? I don't think so. Is there anyone who cares to make a motion to approve the, to authorize the filing of the notice of intent for the grant, which is what this is?
Several.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None opposed? The motion carries. Thank you for, for whatever you did to make this happen. Okay, under special events, we have some, two recommended recurring events. One is the MBL, Fourth of July Parade on Water Street in Woods Hole on July 14th. And the second is the Buzzards Bay Coalition Bike to the Bay, the Shining Sea Bike Path on August 3rd, 2014.
Move approval of the two recurring events. Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None opposed? The next are new, are new events. There are beach weddings. The first is the Kern and Kelly Wedding on July 26th on Falmouth Heights Beach, and the second is the Regan Wedding on Bristol Beach on September 6th.
6th.
Yes. I think this said 16th, but it really is the 6th.
Yeah, it should be the 6th.
These are ones that we had seen before, but we're waiting on Mr. Hoffa's feedback on-
Yes, and we have his feedback.
Right. Then yes, does not see a problem with him.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Move approval? Second?
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None opposed? Unanimous, the motion carries. So now we're going to move on to our general business for the evening, and there are several requests on, for variances to the sign code. And the first one is the sign code variance for off-premise signs with a carousel of light. Let me just say something about, what this is, is, as you know, the design review has certain laws, or I wouldn't call them bylaws, but-
Guidelines?
Guidelines, a little more than guidelines. They have, it's a, it's very, they're very well-formed, and what happens is, if somebody requests a sign and it doesn't meet the code, it's a code, I guess is what I should say, in the bylaw, then it then, and if they wish to pursue it, then it then becomes a variance. And the Selectman are the, is the board that grants the variances for signs. And so most of these requests here tonight are here because they do not meet the sign code, and the individuals have asked for a variance to the bylaw. So, Jim.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. You're first, aren't you lucky?
I actually have some new brochures that we just-
Oh, we'd be happy to have one.
Pass them around.
Sure.
If you don't mind, it's a good opportunity for me to let you all know that we're excited to have the Carousel of Light going to be at the Mullen Hall School Grounds for seven weeks this summer. Hopefully, beginning July 4th weekend, if all goes well, we're going to be setting it up this coming week, starting on Thursday. So we'll, we're very pleased about that. To tell you the truth, I'm not quite sure what, you know, we applied for the sign permit for this beautiful wooden sign that Lance Schenkel carved and has used over the years. We were asking to have it placed at the corner of Shore Street Extension and Main Street. I'm not sure if that could have passed by HTC or-
Well, let me read to you the decision of the Design Review Committee. The Design Review Committee met June 11th and reviewed the application, actually, for three freestanding signs. The first, the carousel to be put up during July and August. The carousel, remember, the, the sign code has, has a 30-day limit on it, so that's one, one piece of information. The carousel will be located at the Mullen Hall School Parking Lot. The first main sign will be posted there, and it measures 18 square feet, which is two feet, two square feet above the sign code. There will be two directional signs measuring 2.6 square feet each. One will be at the carousel location, and the other one is proposed for the corner of Main Street and Shore Street Extension, and it is proposed to be up between June 30th and August 24th. That's another variance to the time code because they're usually only for 30 days. The committee voted in favor of the main carousel sign and would overlook the fact that it is two square feet larger than bylaw would allow. It also includes the open airspace between the posts, which would easily take care of extra, the extra two square feet. The DRC voted not to allow the other sign on Main Street. It would only add to the many other signs that would easily distract drivers from watching the cars in front of them. Also, it is not a necessary sign as the carousel is easily visible from Main Street. So what the Design Review Committee has said was that you could have the main carousel sign during that period of time.
At the school.
At, on the school grounds. That's what they said. So that's what we are being asked to vote on, is to approve the variance to the bylaw in terms of the square feet, by allowing them to put that sign up at the school grounds, but not, they're asking us not to support the other directional signs on Main Street. So that is up for discussion. Do you have any comments you want to make about the decision?
Actually, that was our second choice. Our first choice was to put the wooden sign at the corner of Shore Street Extension and Main Street, and apparently they didn't vote on that, or they denied that.
Denied.
They did.
Okay. And I'm not sure if HTC did or not.
We don't have any information from HTC.
Well, either way, we'd love to have approval to put the sign on the Mullen Hall School Grounds next to the present sign that's also there that says Mullen Hall Public Schools.
It's a beautiful sign.
It is.
It really is, and I think it would be certainly a great attraction to people who are going down Catherine Lee Base, and even Main Street. You could probably see it from Main Street.
Oh, yeah, and I agree that, you know, the carousel's going, it's got a yellow and white top, and you know, it doesn't need to be advertised down- and you know, it doesn't need to be advertised down the Main Street, but we figured we'd give it a shot and see. We want as many people as we can to know that it's there.
Have you made any announcements yet about the first day? That the carousel will be up?
No, you know, we, we're going to be setting it up Thursday morning. It'll take a couple of days to do. We're having a state inspection on Sunday, another third-party inspection on Monday. If all goes well and no parts are breaking, you know, we'll definitely be open by July 4th weekend. But no promises, you never know what can happen.
Right. Okay, is there any questions?
What was the final decision on the electric, on your connection? Are you using the school or?
The school, yes. As a matter of fact, they've, they've already done a lot of the major work that needs to be done to get us an electrical cord. And I believe that an electric panel went up today, as a matter of fact. An electric box of some sort. Yeah, so the school was great. The electrician there has just been so fabulous. Everybody in the school's been so positive and helpful. And, you know, I keep telling my board and everybody around us that the universe is conspiring to make this happen. And we're just putting it out.
But isn't the carousel giving some of the proceeds to the school, the PTA?
Yes, we're very proud of that. We've decided to donate a portion of the proceeds to the Falmouth Public Schools. As well, we'll be donating a portion of the proceeds to the Falmouth Fund, which is an arm of the Cape Cod Foundation. And as you know, that Falmouth Fund distributes monies all over throughout Falmouth area, and we've asked that they, that they streamline it towards events, towards programs that are children-related, children and family-related. So it's a win-win for everybody.
Yes, I think so.
I would move approval of the Carousel of Light 18-foot sign for the period from June 3rd to August 24th on the Mullen Hall property.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Unanimous, the motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Yes.
We did have a letter from the school department saying they have.
Approved it, yeah. Great. I guess. The next is an application for a sign code variance. Update an existing sign, Kimco Realty, Falmouth Plaza, 7 Davis Straits. Is there anybody here from Kimco Realty? The Design Review, the Design Review reviewed the sign application of calling for a replacement sign. This is the Falmouth Plaza. And you probably know what sign already exists at the Falmouth Plaza. It's just a freestanding sign that says Falmouth Plaza. And the applicants here want to have, I'm sure you've seen the picture of what they'd like to, like to have. And it's one of those large board signs with everybody, with a slot for every business. Yeah, here it is. Here's a copy of it. Yeah, I think you all have that. Okay, so the committee unanimously voted against it and spoke in favor of the long-time standing existing sign. This new proposed sign could be considered why the sign code was developed in 91. And the bylaw controls the size of these signs for a shopping center at 40 square foot for obvious reasons. The applicant would like to use the limit for a shopping mall at 100 square feet, but the definition in the bylaw calls for a much bigger mall than this one. So actually, under the bylaw, the Falmouth Plaza is not a shopping mall. It's actually a shopping plaza. So it does, it wouldn't be allowed anyway. So the question is, I wish somebody were here, because we could have a conversation with them about what we like about their proposal or what we don't like about their proposal. So if you wish to follow the recommendations of the Design Review Committee, we can vote on it tonight. Or if you would rather wait and have a dialogue with the applicants, we could continue it. It's up to the board.
I thought it was quite thorough in the response and didn't have any questions. And I thought it was also good that we had, we had a picture to look at and to see, and then to see the two in comparison. And I thought it was a logical reason, and it followed their rules. And then we had a second letter, also asking us to endorse the Design Review.
Right.
So I think between that, and they know their business, and they know the rules, that I'm following that.
So do you have a motion?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't make the motion.
Not to grant the variance?
Not to grant the variance.
I'll second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Maybe we could suggest that they, if we, if the, if the, if the vote is unanimous or the majority vote, not to grant the variance, that we might suggest to them in our reply that they have a sit-down with the Design Review Committee and see if they can't come up with something that would be more acceptable. Okay, all right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Are unanimous, the motion carries. And now we have Molly's. Good evening, and how are you tonight? We see you every year. Do you ever get tired of coming to our meetings?
Of course not.
Of course not.
My greatest pleasure.
So why, why don't you introduce yourself and tell us what you have?
I'm Ben Metzakappa. I represent Molly's Parking on Depot Ave. Every year, we come and seek a variance for our handheld sign to advertise our very small business, which is competing with a very large business over there on Palmer Ave. So that's the nature of the business here. We have three signs. A variance is only required for one of them, which is our handheld sign. The sign is basically held, there are certain hours, you know, we follow those hours. So there's, you know, a definite schedule in mind. We've been to the Design Review Committee. We were asked last year to update the signs, you know, make them look a little nicer. So I went to Mike McGowan, and he, he did that. So Design Review Committee wrote a letter, said we're all set. And so I'm just looking for approval from the board.
When will the off-premise sign be up?
Generally, the, the handheld sign is only up on the weekend. It's usually Friday or Saturday. And, you know, as soon as the Catomet lot opens up, that's when we go out there. You know, when parking becomes a problem, and there's cars everywhere looking for places to park, to go to the vineyard, that's when we're, our business is open. That's our opportunity.
But the sandwich board sign is the one I'm talking about?
The sandwich board sign, we put it out there. It's, it's generally a pretty low-key sign. It sits right there at the corner of Depot Ave and Palmer Ave there, or I guess that would be considered North Main Street. So that goes out occasionally on other times as well. When the, when things aren't as busy, maybe we'll catch a car now and then. So that, the hours for that aren't quite as clear. There's, there's no definitive time period, per se.
I think most of you know that Molly's Parking is on Depot Ave. It's sort of halfway up between Main Street and the bus station. And every year, because it is, it's sort of a variance, if you will, and it's, it's a true variance from the sign code. And so each year, Ben comes in to the selectmen after he meets with the building commissioner and the Design Review Committee. And each year, they improve upon the sign, and the location obviously has to be the same. The handheld sign is by the, by the Steamship Parking Lot. And then the stationary sign is more at the corner. And then there is a sign right in front of the lot, too, as well. But each, it's, in the past, it's always been very tasteful and very well-handled, and the board has never had issues with them in the past that, that I can recall.
Are, are the illustrations that I'm looking at, is this what the signs are going to look like?
It is.
And is there color or anything else to it? Or is it simply black print on a white cardboard?
I believe the color is white background with blue layers, like navy blue.
I, I have the one in color.
Oh, there it is.
It's in my pocket, the original, so it's blue. Because we don't have a color printer yet.
I think it's a slightly darker shade of blue, but that's, that's about it.
And people really wouldn't know about your business if you didn't have that sign.
You've got it, that's right.
And so the point is that once they have come into Falmouth, and they have, and they're going down the Woods Hole Road, there's nowhere to park beyond that.
That's right. Sometimes mayhem ensues in town, you know, when there's, the parking becomes a problem. You know, I don't know what the situation will be this year with the advent of that new parking lot on Palmer Ave with the million new parking spots that they have. I really don't know how many spots they have. But they've clearly done a major, major redo there. But, you know, we're going to give it a shot, anyway. So what generally happens is cars come down, they're told by way of the signage on the highway where to park. Oftentimes, it says Park at Palmer Ave. Or if it says Catomet, they just pass right by that, and they go straight to Falmouth, hoping to find a place. Then they'll pull into the Steamship Authority Parking Lot. Then they'll be subsequently rejected and sent back to Catomet, which is sort of a nightmare traffic situation, anyway. So that's sort of our opportunity to say, you don't need to go back to Catomet. You can just come right over here and park at Molly's. You know, we don't have a huge parking lot there, but, you know, hopefully, it doesn't take that long to fill up the lot. But the guy with the sign in the corner is sort of the crux of the situation. That's, that's really how we get our customers. Otherwise, they would never know about us. The Steamship's signage is huge, blinking, electronic, and they just send them back, and they drive all around town. So, I mean, it's, it's a bit of a nuisance, really, but that's another thing altogether. Really, the, the, the way we get our business is by that handheld sign. And then they see our corner sign, and that's how they know to turn on Depot Ave. So the, the various signs that we have really just help people find parking.
Well, you're talking to a person who doesn't like a lot of signs. I think they're junky. I think they give another description of our town. I think we try very hard to make sure that everything stays on a very high level. And I'm a person who does not like a lot of signs. And I will say that to anyone. And I will say that continuously. But I understand you could not have your business if you didn't have the sign.
That's right.
And that part, I will agree with.
I agree with you as well.
I, I don't like flags. I don't like things waving. I just think there's a sophistication that we don't need to have that.
I agree with you. I, I like a high level of sophistication myself, and I think the town should have the best appearance possible. So we do try really hard to sort of have a decent appearance on the corner there. And, you know, we keep it simple. As you can see, our signs are very basic. There's nothing flashy, no safety orange. You know, we're not advertising mattresses at a warehouse, clearance sale, or anything like that. So, you know, this is pretty much, we, you know, we've been at this for rather a long time as well, so.
I get the idea, there are times you're sort of active, and times you're inactive.
Right. When we're not active, we just disappear.
Right. Like the sandwich board sign put away when you're not active.
Right. It's not out there all night long. And when the business is closed, the signs go away. Yeah.
I would move approval of the time variance for Molly's Parking.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Unanimous, the motion carries. Thank you, Ben. Have a good summer.
Thanks so much. Nice to see you all.
Do we have a landscape plan for July 14th? Thank you very much. Then we will move on to committee interviews. And the, we only have a couple tonight. The Conservation Commission. Mary Schumacher. Yeah, there she is. Hi, Mary. The Conservation Commission has two full and three alternate positions open. And each with terms expiring. One on 6/30/16, and one on 6/30/17. And so, welcome back, Mary. It was nice to see your interest in returning to the Conservation Commission. So maybe you could tell us, other than desperation, why you're, why you're applying?
Well, I, sorry to say, I was not able to complete my last term. And it's an activity that I enjoy very much. And so I am now able to return to it, and I hope I can do so.
Go ahead. Doug?
Just given who, the experience that we're losing from the Conservation Commission, we're certainly grateful to have someone come back who has, has an experience that you do have. So I have no questions, and just very supportive of this.
Anybody else have questions? No? Okay. Is there a motion?
I would move approval of Mary Schumacher to the Conservation Commission to a full position ending, term ending June 30th, 2017.
Second? Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None opposed? Unanimous, the motion carries. Thank you again, Mary.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And the Cable Advisory Committee has two vacancies with terms expiring on 6/30/15 and 6/30/16. And we have Peter Cook. Welcome, Mr. Cook.
He's applying for two committees, right?
Now, you have in your application, your interest in cable advisory and the CPC?
Yes, I am.
But tonight, you're here for the?
I think for both.
For both or just one?
For both.
For both?
Yes.
Okay.
I would suggest we hold just one interview.
Okay.
All right, we'll hold. Yes, we will hold one interview, and you can tell us your interest, of your interest in both of the committees.
Well, and.
We're thrilled about Cable Advisory Committee, because we know how really important it is to have someone, especially with your experience, so.
Thank you. For the record, I'm Peter Cook. I'm from West Falmouth. And in my day job, I'm the IT manager and department head for the Falmouth Public Libraries. I have a great deal of experience when it comes to the cable industry. And I originally moved here seven years ago from Philadelphia. And in that time, I was a professor of technology and computer science at Temple University for nine years. I also was a host of an NPR radio show for 12 years, which essentially, to make it easy, if you know click and clack, it was a technology version of that, live call-in show, questions. But we, we answered tough things. And one of the things we found ourselves in the middle of, being in Philadelphia, was the headquarters of Comcast, and also several other cable companies which no longer exist. And my partner and I, we were the first recipients, in our homes, which we paid for, of cable modems. It followed along the entire history and the pitfalls and the ups and downs of the cable industry and cable modem industry. And understanding, for me, I not, not just went to understand the nuts and bolts, but my background is understanding history and also understanding the people involved, and the motivations of the corporations of the company and all that. I get the mistaken identity sometimes when people look at me just as a techie. But I have a humanities background. I was actually a political science major. And so I've combined technology as well as working with people and understanding the motivations of people to be an expert, I believe, in telecommunications, computer science, and also history.
Interesting. Did you just kind of like have an awakening or something?
No.
That all of a sudden, that you've been here a while, and now we have a cable advisory committee, and you'd like to be on it?
No, I can, I can give you the background on that, too. I just wanted to give an introduction first. Since I moved here seven years ago, I've had an interest in this town for really specific reason. Where I, where I come from in Pennsylvania, where I lived there, I lived there for 45 years of my life. One of its downfalls of where we lived it was, it was an area called a township. It was not actually a town. And there's virtually no representative government whatsoever. So when we, my wife and I were deciding what to do next to, where we, when we moved next to, like many, we came here on vacation. But one of the things that attracted me was the actual town and the actual idea of a representative government. During my time, prior to going to technology, I was also an intern for a US Congressman for six years, on three different occasions. And I had a full intention of following that, of being a political science major, because honestly, to me, politics is what sports is to other people. I enjoy the heck out of it, and enjoy the experience. I don't get bored coming to meetings. In fact, I've actually been to town meetings long before we moved here. One of the things I did, too, is we subscribed to the Enterprise three years prior to moving to Falmouth. Just to get an idea of where we wanted to move. We weren't sure about Falmouth. And I started doing video project jobs here, too, prior to moving here, both involving technology. I did work for NOAA and through Coon Meston Farm. Did some work for MBL, and did some work through HOE. In addition, when I first got here, I, we went, we eventually moved to West Falmouth, and I was talking to the West Falmouth Library Director. And I had no intention, I didn't, I wasn't working for the library at the time. And she said, well, we have this project coming up where we have citizens coming in from West Falmouth who want to tell their histories. And could somebody possibly film it? So I did. And that fulfilled enough, for me, a number of things. One is to get to know the town better, to meet people. One is to learn the history, which was instilled by my father from a very young age of learning history. And one was to become part of the community, and really understand it. history, and one was to become part of the community and really understand it. And the conversations that were held, some of them were hilarious, and for the first time ever, people were telling stories that they never told their neighbors in 40 years. And that DVD ended up being as a permanent collection of the West Falmouth Library. And from that relationship, I started working on their computers at the West Falmouth Library, and eventually, after a few years of being here, the job opened at the Falmouth Public Library, and I applied and was fortunate to be accepted. So my real desire is to serve the community further than my day job. I mean, I love my day job because I look at the Falmouth Libraries being the crossroads of Falmouth. I think in a week, I see everybody I know and even more, and I get to really meet people and understand what's going on here. Also, as a side note, too, I think I've read every Falmouth history book that ever was printed, prior to coming here and going there. So really, for me, I'm a history junkie, and I really enjoy it, and I really enjoy the idea of community. So when I was looking at, prior to this, looking at the committees that might be interested in cable was sort of a no-brainer, because they needed the help, and that's something I have work experience in. When it came to something else that I could see myself supporting the community, I spoke community preservation, and the first two words struck me as preserving community. And that's the reason why I moved here, because we wanted to be part of the community. Living in the suburbs of Philadelphia, I didn't feel like I was part of a community. It was just, you didn't really, unless you belonged to a church, synagogue, or some other civic group, you really had no connection. And we moved here because we wanted our family and our kids to be part of this community. So when I see an opportunity for the community preservation committee, I see this fulfilling all the goals of history, housing, recreation, all the things it represents. And I was fortunate in the last month, actually, to be approached by two committee members on each committee and said, would you like to serve? First Kevin Lynch in the Cable Advisory Committee, and then Peter Clark asked me. And he and I sat down for a good hour or so, and I asked him a ton of questions, saying, what is this like? And he told me his history of the nine-year history of it, and he said, would you like to apply? And I said, sure. And by the way, being a town employee, I also consulted with Frank Duffy, and he gave his blessing, and he said I should do it, apply to as many, or apply to a committee that I can tolerate, as far as I can tolerate. And I have a very high tolerance, and like I said, this kind of thing doesn't exist. And when I came here, I fully embraced it. And even though I'm not part of any government position, other than, you know, being a town employee, I did run unsuccessfully this past time for the first time to be town meeting member in West Falmouth, and missed my nine votes, but we'll try again.
Good.
So I guess it's a desire to be more, give more of myself and my expertise.
Great.
My passion.
Wow. Well, thank you for that, that's very...
Anticipate my questions.
Yes. So, do we have a, well, we have, there's two committees, so we have, we could do it in one motion. The advisory, Cable Advisory Committee to 6/30/16.
I think we cleaner should do is two different motions.
Two different motions?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would move that we appoint Peter Cook to the Cable Advisory Committee, with the term expiring June 30th, 2016.
Okay.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous? Motion carries. And the second?
I would move appointment of Peter Cook to the Community Preservation Committee, with the term ending June 30th, 2017.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? None opposed? Unanimous? The motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I just had one, and all, as I was listening, I never got to the part of why Falmouth.
Why Falmouth?
Yes, I think as I was listening, you said that we came to Falmouth, we were Philadelphian.
Right. Well, we looked at, we vacationed in many different towns, and the attraction here was a number of levels, and it just so happens, well, first off, just visually showing up about the time we were deciding to move here, both the playground and the library were being renovated, and the amount of interest being put into that, I was basically born and raised in a library since I was a little kid, so it's sort of ironic that I'm working for one. My father is very proud. And, but one of the other things, things that attracted us are the arts, theater, and music especially. And for me personally, music has actually been amazing, because my older son, Tom, is actually autistic, high-functioning autistic. His love, and the thing that makes him not autistic, when he's performing, is that he's been performing clarinet for 10 years. And he has had so many opportunities here at Falmouth to express that and be part of organizations like Summer Sounds, the Falmouth School District. He's now actually just starting, he's going to be doing two concerts with the town band this year, on July 3rd and August 14th. We're very proud parents. But that whole body of things that we could all be a part of. My wife acts in the Falmouth Theater Guild. For fun, I do backstage work and tech work for the Falmouth Theater Guild and other performing groups around here. So there's so much that could add to our lives that we couldn't find where we were before.
And it started with a vacation here.
Started with a vacation, but honestly, I gotta say, it also has to do with the people we met, and the individuals we talked to, and we asked them, why do you live here? Why do you like it so much? And they told us, so...
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a vote again? Yeah, okay. Thank you very much, Peter Cook. Okay, next is the Waterways Committee, Jeffrey Thomas. And this is, they have three vacancies, too, but the terms, term ends 6/30/17. So tell us, you have quite an interesting resume here with the Coast Guard.
Thank you. I apologize for the small type.
No, that's all right.
Peter, I know Peter from the library, I've dealt with him many times.
Oh, do you?
He's a tough act to follow.
Oh, yeah.
Like Peter, I am fairly new to Falmouth. My wife's been here, summer residence with her family, for 50 years. I've been a full-time resident for three years, weekend resident for 11 years. The water is my passion. As you can see from my resume, I, safe boating is my avocation, my vocation, you know, I've got an engineering degree, I've been a professional project manager for 30 years in the high-tech environment in central Mass. So I can understand projects and all the activities that go along with working with people that don't want to do what you want them to do. That's kind of how I picture project management. But my real, my real passion is water, waterways. I've been a boater all my life. I don't live on the water, I live across the street from the water in Great Pond, and I've got a fleet of kayaks, I've got a motorboat, and I've got a rowboat, so I'm always on the water. But I spend literally hundreds of hours a year volunteering for the U.S. Coast Guard, and that's really my mantra, is safe boating. I've been qualified for the last several years as a search and rescue captain. I teach safe boating, I'm also a recreational boat examiner, I've worked with the Harbor Masses office on multiple occasions. I've pulled people out of the water here off of Falmouth. So I'm all about boating safety, and I just love Falmouth like Peter does. I chose Falmouth to become my home, and I'd like to be able to volunteer some of my talents to the town of Falmouth.
Well, the Waterways Committee also has money, so, I mean, that might tend to make your job a little bit easier in some respects. So anybody have any questions for Mr. Thomas? Well, I can understand your passion for the water. I was a boater for 25 years, too, so it's absolutely like today would have been an incredible day to be out on the water.
This whole week, last weekend.
This whole week, yeah, exactly. So if nobody has any questions, I think, you know, your resume is obviously very pertinent to your interests, and I think you gave us a good idea of why you want to do this. And nobody has any questions? Does anybody have a motion?
I would move approval of appointing Jeffrey Thomas to the Waterways Committee, with the term ending June 30th, 2017.
Second?
Second. Any further discussion?
I'll ask a question.
Sure.
Is that what...
Well, you can do that now, yes.
We can ask him a question now, because when you were saying that, I think that what I heard in your voice is that you have a passion for it.
Yes.
And I think that the fact that you are new to the area, but you have never veered away, you've stayed with that passion, and you're in the right place. And I think you're applying for the right position to volunteer in the town. The whole thing fits together after I listened to you, and I didn't think as much to ask a question as to say, I'm impressed.
Thank you.
So that's, wasn't in the form of a question.
Oh, thank you.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? None opposed? Unanimous? Motion carries. Congratulations, and we welcome you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next, we have Joan Devine, and this is for the Board of Assessors. So you can tell us a little bit about yourself and why you'd like to be on the Board of Assessors. I'm sure you know what they do, being in the real estate business.
Yes. Well, good evening, and thank you for inviting me. I heard from a board member that there was an opening, and I thought that it would be an exciting opportunity for me to make a contribution to Falmouth, because I love Falmouth, too. I've been here since 1998, and my previous business experience was as an owner of a manufacturing company. We made costumes, dance wear, and recital costumes. And lately, I've had my real estate license and I'm a licensed agent, and I own a construction company working in residential redevelopment, and loving real estate and like to see what I could do for the town.
Okay. Doug?
Is there a potential conflict between the real estate agent and the Board of Assessors?
Well, the only real estate that I own in Falmouth is the house that I live in. Our business is based mainly on South Coast and in Newton and Needham, and I don't own any property for investment purposes in the town.
The only other comment I'd make is I feel that the kind of mix we've had in these applicants of some people coming back on committees, some people who've been around for a while, and a number of people who've never been on committees here putting themselves forward, I'm just thrilled at meeting some new people who are interested in helping out, because it's crucial for our town to be able to have people serving on these committees.
Becky?
What is residential redevelopment?
Well, that's basically finding properties that are blighted and bringing them back into the tax rolls of the towns that we work in. For instance, there's property in New Bedford that we purchased from the town on a proposal that we gave to them to purchase a firehouse. So it's very dilapidated, and I don't think it's been in use for decades. And we're bringing that back into use. There's two commercial properties and four residential properties, and that's currently under development. So we basically tried to look for properties that are dilapidated, possibly abandoned, and putting them back on the tax rolls. Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Is there a motion?
I would move to appoint Joan Devine to the Board of Assessors. I lost my term expiring.
6/30/16.
6/30/16.
Second?
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? None opposed? Unanimous? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next are the Committee Renewals to Veterans Council. The, as you know, the Veterans Council is only appointed for one-year terms, and each year, they come up for a renewal of appointment. And those are Carol Kenny, who's from the Military Support Group, Robert Texera, represents the American Legion, John Simchuck represents the Elks Lodge, Jim Sawyer, Ambatson, Ahmed Mustafa, the VFW. So those are the appointments.
I thought the committee was larger, then we also had some that were at-large. Didn't we change the size of the committee and make it seven or nine?
Well, maybe they have different terms. These are the ones who represent the actual military veterans groups.
Okay.
And I think the others, we just added, but they're different.
Okay, great.
I think there were nine.
Yes.
I would move an appointment, a reappointment of those five, Carol Kenny, Robert Texera, John Simchuck, Jim Sawyer, Ahmed Mustafa, as have been recommended by the groups they represent.
Seven.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? None opposed? Unanimous? The motion carries. And now, we move to a discussion and a vote on the eco-toilet exemption. So, let me get to the right page here. So this is, this is written by Town Council, and these are the regulations that...
Madam Chair, there are two pieces of regulations, as you noted, authored by Town Council, and then the participation agreement, so two important pieces. The regulations, as Town Councils indicated, if it's agreeable to the Board, you would consider approving those in draft form, and then, but you can adopt the participation agreement as is, if that is your desire. And again, these were developed with the able assistance of our colleagues on the Water Quality Management Committee. We appreciate their assistance very much, and I'm sure they can assist if there would be any questions about those as well.
And so the idea is that we approve the draft regulations tonight, and then publicize when we're ready to vote on approving the final.
Correct.
And presumably do that, well, no earlier than July 14th, your next meeting, would
give us time to advertise and seek comment of your approval of the draft regulations, if that would be your desire. Participation agreement, you can go ahead and approve as is, however.
I would agree with that. That was the suggestion of Council, too, that we have, that they, people, the people have an opportunity to, they'll be published in the paper, can read them, can comment on them, and then we could do the final vote to adopt them on the 14th of June. So if someone would like, go ahead. Questions?
What is the difference about this one and what we talked about about 20 minutes ago?
This is actually, this is what the letter was describing, that the letter was going to describe these regulations, which we hadn't really created yet, but we knew we were going to. So the letter really can't go out either until these are actually...
Yes, true.
Okay.
The one thing I had noticed in the regulations that I think makes a lot of sense, but I wasn't surprised, I was a little surprised when, was the limit of the max of 50 properties. If it got beyond that, I don't think it's going to be close. I think we've had 10 applicants for this, or 10 interested people who have taken steps in that direction. A few more. Okay.
But it should be publicized that, you know, you've got to jump on it if you're interested, because now that there's been more publicity, maybe there'll be more interest.
And you do have a time deadline of October 31st, 2014, to actually get it done, so I don't think the 50 will actually enter into it, but I think it does make sense to have a limit on it, just...
And it's important, I think, to publicize these and make sure people read them, because if they are interested, they have to know that if they choose to at some later time go back on the sewer system, they have to go back, they have to pay the full betterment back to day one. So that's something that, when they make that commitment to go the eco-toilet, they want to make sure that they're going to hang in there with it and not want to go back later on, because then they have to pay the full betterment anyway. So...
Can I just say one more?
Yeah.
You might have already thought of this, but the Cape Vin Islands Real Estate Association, it's certainly something that Realtors might want to know about in terms of people looking or owning properties, or, and, you know, might be, could be a selling point, or certainly it's information, so it's just another, another place to reach out to people.
I was just wondering, either Eric or Sia, just to make sure that I'm aware of the situation, that there is still the opportunity for the grant to support putting this in? I understand it's only a small percentage of what the actual cost is, but just if we're trying to encourage this as in addition to our regulations, could you expand upon that?
Yes. The Board of Selectmen approved $80,000 a couple of years ago for this grant program, which is $5,000 per household, on the condition that they install eco-toilets in all their toilets and that they participate in full with the monitoring and all the rest. That amounts to 16. That amounts to sixteen possible participants. We're pretty close to that number now. In fact, if everyone who's in the pipeline now goes through with it, we'll be there, essentially. So there's no more money in that pot. And this program is a completely different offer, only for the people in the sewer service area, for them to be exempted from paying the betterment. I think it's pretty clear in there that you can't do both, because that would be, it would be quite an incentive, and we're not trying to make it cost them nothing, which it could well do, but if they, if somebody took advantage of those incentives, they have to be participants, too.
I didn't really fully understand the last sentence under one, where it says, "A property owner who previously qualified..."
That's what he's just saying.
Oh, that's what you were referring to?
Right. Right. The way this is written, they can, they can go for the five thousand dollars if there's any slots left, if they're in the pipeline.
Mm-hmm.
Or they can go for the...
For the betterment.
Non-payment of the betterment, but not both.
But not both. That's what, yeah. Okay. All right.
I would move approval of the regulations in draft form, and advertise that these, we've got to have these in the paper, advertise that we're going to vote on them, and I would recommend that we choose today when that's going to happen, so that they know.
July fourteenth.
July fourteenth would be the desire of the Board. We could make that work.
Okay. July fourteenth, and we'll vote on them again on July fourteenth for the final draft.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous? The motion carries. And then the second is the participation agreement, and I think that's pretty, pretty clear.
That's in final...
And that, that's in final form, so we can actually vote that tonight.
Sue, did you read this carefully? I don't understand it.
What?
This agreement. Yeah, have my lawyer read it.
I move approval of the participation agreement for the on-swear service area eco-toilet betterment exemption program.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? None opposed? Unanimous? The motion carries.
I can't.
Thank you very much. That we have to sign. Now, the next item is this discussion and vote on liaison assignments. And I know Doug and Sue have met and talked about how some committees might be combined. Julian's already getting an opinion from Town Council on whether or not we have the, what authorities we have to do that. And secondly, we have a number of opinions from Council related to which boards or committees are subject to the three-term, three-term limit, and which ones are not. And I think I would like to put this back on the agenda for a discussion, so that we actually can discuss those opinions and kind of come up with which committees actually, where they fall into the charter and therefore they're term limited, or they're not in the charter, they're advisory, and they're not term limited. So like, the Gulf Advisory Committee is one that Council said is not term limited.
Except for by the formation of it. It says, the article it actually formed in limited to two terms.
Yeah, well, that's why I say we have to really review this and be very clear about which ones are what. And the other thing, I guess, is you, I thought, I thought what you're trying to do is really a good idea, to try to see how committees could be combined in a way, or like some committees that, such as the Transportation Management Commission. I remember when that was formed, and that was because there was a particular interest by a group of people at that time to do something about parking on Main Street. That really was how it all got started, and then parking in town in general. And that was General Flanagan at the time. And so we got a group of people together, and we formed the Transportation Management Committee, but it never existed before that. And then, when he died, or he left, they, oh, now I know what happened. They all left one night. They just said, "That's it, we're done." And that was it. And that was, what, four or five years ago, maybe? It's been quite a while.
Oh, ten at least.
Oh, ten, oh, I don't think, ten, really? Well, anyway, it was a number of years ago, so there is no Transportation Management Commission. It doesn't really exist anymore.
If I could just...
Yeah.
Kind of go off that. When, we, we met with really two goals in mind. One is to make the volunteers who participate to make their time more efficient, have their recommendations well considered and acted upon, sort of as one kind of side of the road, and then the other side of the road. In, you know, that involves efficiency and consolidation, and to make sure their efforts are, you know, used and, and the other side of the coin is, is really that they be appreciated by seeing their work go into effect. So that was sort of the umbrella upon which we started looking, and really just provided kind of a, a list of, or an outline of things to consider. So we appreciate getting, you know, having the opportunity to look at, you know, the important role that volunteers take in town government.
I think that's absolutely critical and a really good thing to look at, because you, we need to have people, we need to let people know that we do want them, and we do need them, and we do appreciate the work that they do. And, and I think paying more attention to the committees and more attention to their work is, is a good thing.
And one of the major concerns we had, in the idea of consolidating committees, may send the exact wrong message about saying we don't value them. For instance, if we said, "Would it make sense to combine the Beach Committee and the Water Waste Committee, because so many of their interests overlap?", I would worry that they would, each of those committees would say, "Well, I guess they don't think we matter that much, because we can be combined." And how to balance that concern with interesting, no, but sometimes they discuss the exact same things and are, you know, taking more time, because the two committees, you know, talk to Don Hopper about when we're going to dredge the Falmouth Harbor, and if it's the same time that Surf Drive would like to have beach nourishment, it's two committees talking about the exact same issue.
And so part of that is by talking with the boots on the ground, by the people that actually do it, and talk to the committee chairs, and that will be part of what we hope to develop.
So are you interested in holding off on the liaison assignments until we work this out? Say, in the next three or four weeks? Or are you interested in doing the assignments and, and then work on it anyway?
My, my first thought is that we probably want to get out there and, and do the liaison work, in that we work on this project, you know, kind of simultaneously. That's, I'm willing to hear other thoughts, that's just my, my starting point.
I think the consolidation project is going to take quite a while.
I would think. Well, I, I only have the interest of Sue and, and Doug, and I have one, and I don't have, we don't, I, anyway, since we left the groupings and went back to the single ones, I think Sam and Becky need to complete this and, and see, or maybe you already can, which ones you're interested in.
Yeah, I can.
Yeah, I don't know whether there are conflicts, but I can tell you the ones that I...
Well, okay, why don't you, and then I'll put it down right now.
Okay, the CPC.
CPC.
Conservation Commission.
Oh, wait, okay, okay. What else?
The Energy Committee, but Sue, I defer to you on that one.
That's all right. I'll put your name down and work it out.
The Finance Committee.
Mm-hmm.
And the Town Building Committee. Those will be six that I, be my first...
That's only four.
One, two, three, four, five, six. Oh, I said, I did have Water Waste Committee as well.
Water Waste? That's, I only have five.
CPC, Conservation Commission.
Oh, you said Conservation, I didn't hear that.
I did, I'm sorry.
Okay. And Becky, what are your...
Okay. I didn't see my list, and I thought I had turned it in, but it would start with the, it would start with the Council on Aging, Design Review, Solid Waste, Zoning Board. How many did I say? Four?
No, yeah, that's four.
Why don't we see what's left? Because I...
Well, there's a lot left.
Oh.
Affirmative Action, Affordable Housing, the Ag Commission, the Beach Committee, Bike Ways, Board of Health, Cable Advisory, Coastal Ponds...
She's already doing quite a lot, right?
Historic District, Historical Commission, Human Services, School Committee...
Well, I'm already on the Cape Cod Water...
And Veterans Council.
So it's just one more. I'm already on the Cape Cod Water Protection...
No, well, you're a member. That's, that's separate. That's not liaison. If you're a member, you're a member. That's, yeah.
Okay. Beach Committee.
The Beach Committee.
And Bike Ways.
And Bike Ways. Okay, so why don't I do this? Why don't I...
Over, Sue.
What?
Over, Sue, just a second.
All right. We have, we have Becky on the Beach Committee, the Bike Ways Committee, the, and then on the Community Preservation, Doug has expressed an interest in Sam. Then, well, let's go to the ones that there's only one. The Conservation Commission is Sam, the, uh, Gulf Advisory Committee is Doug, the Library Trustees is Doug, the Planning Board is Doug, the Solid Waste is Becky, Town Building is Sam, and the Water Waste is Sam. And Sue, you're, you have EDIC. That's right. We need, we should vote tonight to just appoint you to the EDIC, because that's a member.
I move we appoint Sue Moran to the EDIC. Second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous? So now you're officially a member. And then the Rec Committee, you and Doug are in on that. Then you have the Substance Abuse, and, and while we have no Transportation Management Committee. So we have a couple of duplicates, and then we have some left over. So I don't know how you want to do that, decide which one wants to give up something and take something else.
And to...
Was I on zoning? Did you say that? I only heard...
Community Preservation, that's Sam and Doug, so...
I'm not going to argue with any of them.
All right. So you give that up?
And I'll give up Zoning Board.
And you'll give up the Zoning Board. And we still have two on Council on Aging, Sue and Becky.
That's for Becky.
You'll, you'll, okay. And then we have Energy Committee. We have Sue and Sam.
Neither Sue, neither Becky or Sam wants to do the School Committee.
The problem is that there are conflicts. I was trying to...
You put down School Committee?
I would have, but they, actually...
I mean, I, I'll be happy to do School Committee.
I haven't looked at the schedule.
But I'm just worried about conflicts between all the others.
Well, again, with a liaison committee, I do not see that, I would hope you don't expect...
You don't engage in conversation with them.
Or go to every meeting.
I don't think it's possible. I would be happy, happy to be a liaison to the School Committee.
School Committee? Okay. And then...
Which means...
Then Recreation Committee is Doug and Sue?
They only need one.
You can, go ahead.
Okay. Now Doug has one, two, three, four, five. You have Community Preservation.
Why don't you get, I'll go back to...
Oh, wait, we're back to Finance, two on Finance, Sam and Doug.
Sam gave up on the other one, so he can do the Finance.
Okay.
And I'll do AdCom.
AdCom? So, we have Doug on AdCom, Becky on Beach, Becky on Bike Ways, Doug on, on the, on the Community Preservation. We have Becky on Council on Aging.
Do you put me on Conservation Commission?
Yes, Sam on Conservation.
Okay.
Becky on Design Review, Sue on the EDIC, and then the Energy, I forget, there's two, Sue and Sam. Which one wants to do what?
I'd like to keep Energy, because I had switched to Conservation.
Is that okay with you, Sam?
Is that all right with you?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay.
Okay, then Finance is Sam, and Gulf Advisory is Doug, Library is Doug, Planning Board is Doug, Sue is the Recreation Committee, Sam is the School Committee, Solid Waste is Becky, Sue has Substance Abuse, Sam has the Town Building Committee, Water Waste is Sam, and ZBA is Becky.
Who's Veterans?
So, one, two...
Veterans was one of my requests. I'm not sure how it worked out.
Which?
Veterans?
Oh, Veterans. Did I miss that? Oh, yeah. Is that one of yours?
It was.
Okay, that's good, because you only have four, so now you have five.
Okay, good.
So, one, two, three, four, one, two...
Five.
Oh, wait a minute, I put EDIC in the wrong place here. Two, three, four, five, one, two, three, four, five. Comes out, and I'll just take what's left over.
Well, thank you.
Whatever that is. Affirmative Action, Board of Health, Cable Advisory, well, we'll just work down, and we'll redo this and see what it looks like, and then we'll take a look at it in our next meeting and then make it final.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I have a question. I don't, I only have four for Selectmen Moffett.
She has the Beach Committee...
Oh, she says Beach Committee.
The Bike Ways Committee.
That's what I missed. Okay.
Bike Ways.
The Council on Aging, the School Committee, I mean, Solid Waste and ZBA.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Solid Waste.
I have five. I'm going to, if you'd add Affordable Housing, the Falmouth Housing Authority, I think just those are two that should go to the same person.
Are you want to go do those? Affordable Housing, what's the other one?
Falmouth Housing Authority.
Oh, the Falmouth Housing. Oh, good. All right. So we'll get this typed up and sent out by email, and then you can take a look at it, and we'll finalize it, and then approve it at our next meeting.
Well, if I do the Cape Cod Water Protection Collaborative, that makes seven.
That, no, that's different. You're a member...
I know, but it's, it's...
It's not a liaison assignment. You're actually a member representing the town, like Sue is a member representing the town on the EDIC. They're, they're not lia, they shouldn't even be in here, because they're, they're not liaison appointments. They're actual appointments by the Board of a member to represent the Board.
And if you're missing, the Falmouth Arts Council should also be on here, shouldn't it?
I don't know.
But we redo it, we can...
Yeah.
That was one of the difficulties we had with getting a consolidated list.
There's a book, you know, that has all the committees on it in the office.
We should have, we should redo it.
Diane has it in there, yeah. It's a whole book. It has everything in there.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, you may find something in there that's missing. Anything else on this topic?
Yes, I never looked at conflicts of days, but I'll look at that later.
Okay, yeah, take a look.
Because you, you could have just said two, and they're both on the same day.
Yeah, they could be on the same night, so maybe what we can do is, when Diane, we does, we does this, she can also put when these committees meet, so you, oh, they're already there?
Yeah, that was very helpful.
She already thought of that, I guess.
She already did that. Well, good. Isn't that nice? I never looked past assignment.
It's great when you have someone that anticipates your thoughts.
Hmm? What?
It's great when you have someone that anticipates your thoughts.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, next is the, this is, um, this was a request by Sam. Unfortunately, we don't have the letter written yet, I'm sorry to say, but we will. We'll have to ask Julian or Heather or somebody to write it for us. There is legislation pending. It is now in the Senate Ways and Means Committee, and it is legislation that, that has been Ways and Means Committee. And it is legislation that has been proposed by the telecom industry to exempt all local zoning and control over the sighting of any wireless antennas and equipment. And right now, that local control is very important to the towns. I know we had a recent application for a monopole in East Falmouth. And I, that, those also come under the Development of Regional Impact by the Cape Cod Commission. They also require a special permit by the Board of Appeals, any monopoles. So there was quite a discussion with the neighbors about that, the sighting of it. And it isn't so much even the pole, it's the equipment. Because they have generators that actually power these, these monopoles or the antennas. It's how many antennas you can hang on a monopole, and the type of antenna, the height, whether or not it has to be lit at the top because of if they're in any air.
Flight path.
At the flight path. Then there's also the sighting in terms of access to the site, whether it goes through a bus' private property, you know, when they actually service their equipment, what they do, the protection of the monopole with fencing and all of that. So there's a lot to it. It isn't just putting up a monopole, and it isn't just hanging, you know, whatever it is they hang on there. So it's very important, I think, to all the towns that they retain control over this. And so Sam had suggested that we send a letter because it's now, it is pending legislation. I did, I had talked to the Senate President's Office earlier in the week about it. I can't remember how I came upon it, but even before, no, even before you guys mentioned it.
It was an email that we received. It was an alert that we received.
And, well, actually, when Sue sent the email too. And Steve Maher in the office is following it. He's tracking the bill. But he's also going to try to see where the Senate President is on this too. So I think sending a letter to the Senate President, to our delegation, you know, Tim Madden, Dave Viera, Senator Wolf, who represent the Cape and Islands, sending a letter to them would be very helpful, that we oppose the bill because we think local control. And so we'll get something written, and then Diane will let you know when it's there. If you agree that we do this, then we can get the letter written. It can be available in the office for you to sign when you come in, whenever.
Is there anything on the side of why they think this is a positive move, when it just sounds so negative to me, that someone wants to take?
Oh, because the telecom industry doesn't want to have to go through this local process.
Well, no, I'm saying as far as the politicians in Boston.
I don't know where they are in this. We don't, Steve is trying to find out, Steve Maher is trying to find out what the sense is of the legislators regarding this bill. So it wouldn't hurt if you want to call Tim Madden or Dave Viera and ask them about it. Sometimes they, you know, they may know about it, they may not. I just know that right now, it's in the Senate Ways and Means Committee. It's gone through a hearing. And then from there, it has, the Ways and Means Committee has to report it out. And then it would go probably to conference. Because then usually the Senate and the House have to work out their differences. So it's a while yet, but still, it needs action, I think. And we definitely, I am a very strong supporter of having local control, especially on issues such as this. So if you all agree, we could have a vote to send the letter, and then we'll get the letter crafted. And then if you have any changes you want to make, we can do that. But a vote of the Board now to at least get a letter prepared to send to our legislature.
Is that a motion?
That, well, I can't make them. I prefer not to make motions as the Chair, so if someone else would like to make a motion.
I'd be happy to make that motion, that we send a letter to our legislative delegation opposing the proposed zoning legislation, that we remove local control for replacement of any kind of radio frequency antennas.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Unanimous, motion carries. So, reports. Who would like to report? Sleckman, on your activities of the week?
I have something.
You too.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, go ahead, Sue.
A couple of things. I attended the Steamship Authority meeting on Nantucket with regard to the Woods Hole expansion and renovation. And just, the thing that you noticed most at the meeting was how carefully the management took into consideration the concerns and worked very well with the Woods Hole Village Association, along with comments that were made at an earlier meeting I attended with respect to pedestrian access, that really, from what I saw, was spearheaded by Kathy Norton, who's Falmouth's representative. And it really made a dramatic difference in the actual plan, so that the building was moved, so that there would be shorter distance for everyone to walk, whether it's young children, older folks, handicapped people. And I think that that's, it's really a testimony to the long-term and well-earned respect between the Steamship Authority and the Town of Falmouth and Woods Hole in particular. So that was just one thing. The second thing, I ran into Julian at the Henry B. Bigelow Tour in Woods Hole, which was just a terrific opportunity. Lots of people were there, kids. And the thing that I came away with on that was just how proud the scientists and the folks who run the ship are of the work they do, and how expansive, I mean, it goes, everything, Julian was asking a lot of technical questions that went right over my head about dredging and all sorts of things. But it's also, you know, collecting specimens. And it's just, you know, it's another reason why we're very lucky to have, you know, all the resources that we do in Falmouth and through the Woods Hole Oceanographic Opportunities. And then just one last thing, I volunteered at Arts Alive, and Roger and Judy Day just did a tremendous job organizing it. There were tons of volunteers beside me. The arts community is just, was very giving, and in fact donated to the raffle that we were offering. It's a terrific draw for all kinds of businesses, for the hotels, restaurants, shops. People were from all over looking to see what else they could take advantage of in Falmouth. So it certainly does take over Main Street, but I think it's a terrific balance. And people in town get a lot out of it as well. I went to the Farmer's Market Climate Change Resolution tent, where you wrote down sort of your resolution of the year, and got a nice sample of herbs, and also got to see the Carousel of Light carving. So just three terrific opportunities just in one week.
Great. Sam?
I went to the Volunteers in Public Schools Recognition Dinner, and thoroughly enjoyed it. Of course, I knew a lot of people there. But I was thinking that actually that would be a nice occasion to actually do for our committee members that contribute, to have some sort of a recognition dinner, or barbecue, or something like that, where we could express our appreciation that way. So something we could consider in the future.
No? Doug?
We should report that we did travel up to Boston. And I'm not sure what we can report on that, but.
I'm not sure either. I think we have to wait for Council to let us know.
And then a number of us were at the meeting about the Navska White House.
Yeah, today. Yeah, the three of us were there this morning for Navska.
But didn't talk to each other, we just listened to them.
And I climbed the Bigelow too. I went down that same day. I tell you, by the time I got to the top deck, I said, I used muscles I never knew I had. Those stairs, they were much harder going up than coming down.
And that's because it was moving.
It was fascinating. Then, but watching the reposts, you know, the vehicle, I took, actually Jack Mokely happened to come at that time. So they were all explaining to us about this thing. And then I was, I think I was the first one there, because when I was on the bridge, I was the only one on the bridge. And the officer of the day, what's his name? I've forgotten, gave me the whole tour of the bridge, all the different places they have where they have to monitor, guide the ship, and how they, there are so many ways that that ship can be, that is, they hold it in position. And they have all these different, you know, things they use. Anyway, it was really amazing. But the repost thing that got me was all the cameras on the front of it. I took a picture of it with my iPhone. There must have been 18 cameras on that, all different sizes of cameras, all built into this piece of equipment. It was just amazing. The other place I went last week was to the breakfast for the Cape Cod Young Professionals. This is, everybody knows that we're losing young people on the Cape. And so what do we do about it? Well, this group formed about two years ago. And I think her name is Anne Van Black. She's the Executive Director of the CCYP. That's what they call themselves. And they have done a study using Ben Bluestone from UMass. And he was there too, and spoke on all the data. They've really gathered very interesting data. They're going to publish their executive summary. Well, I think I have a copy of it now. It hasn't been published yet. But all their data will be available sometime in July. So we'll be able to see why young people are leaving, are not coming here, or why if they do come here after a short period of time, they're gone, because they can't sustain themselves, because of the cost of housing and just the cost of living on the Cape. But it's a very interesting study, and it would be very useful for the EDIC.
Just thank you.
Yes, because that could be a real project of theirs. Once they have the data, then what can we do here? Because in Boston, he talked about, housing is such an issue for young professionals in Boston. They can't afford condos to either rent or buy. So what they've been doing is they've been building what they call micro-units. You know, they're like four, 400 square feet little units that guys live in. In fact, I saw one on TV not long ago. There was on some NPR station or some public station. And it was this guy who was living in one of these micro-units. And it really wasn't all that small, but it was perfect for him. He's a young 20-something, and he got this job in Boston. And they don't know if they really want to stay there. They, so they don't want to make commitments in terms of housing, even if they can afford it. So what the young professionals, I must tell you, the room was, there must have been 250 people there at that breakfast. Every organization, you know, on the Cape, I think, was there. So it was very, very well done. And I think they're doing a good job. So the, I got copies of what I brought back from there. And then when the rest of it comes out in July. And then we'll stay in touch with people because they're doing a really good job.
Great.
I was also asked to extend an invitation to all of you to historic Highfield Hall's open house this Sunday from 11:30 to 3:30.
Oh, this Sunday.
Say it again, Doug.
Highfield Hall from 11:30 to 3:30, this Sunday, June 29.
Oh, good.
Their open house.
Oh, it's their open house. Thank you.
And they have two new art exhibits that they're going to be on display at that point.
Okay.
Anybody else? Town managers report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple items. It was my pleasure to attend the meeting of the Mass CEC Board on Tuesday, June 17, to personally thank all members of that board for their unanimous voted support of the Town of Falmouth in our responsible operation of the wind turbines. I also reported to them on the actions of town meeting in furtherance of that as well. I want to thank the board for your excellent and insightful dialogue and discussion pursuant to your annual strategic plan update. With Heather's assistance, we're amending the document to return to the board in the coming weeks for your further review and ultimate consideration for adoption. Also, as Sleckman-Moran noted, it was my pleasure to attend the tour of the NOAA ship, Henry Bigelow. The board will recall that some months ago, you joined with the Chamber of Commerce in transmitting a letter of concern to our legislative delegation at federal level. We copied our state legislators as well regarding our concern that that ship was being docked out of state due to some limitations on NOAA's, basically the construction limitations and the maintenance difficulties with NOAA's existing dock, among other matters. And that's something that we want to consider remaining in steadfast with the Chamber of Commerce and others, because in the long run, this is NOAA's headquarters, of course, in this area. And to have their landmark ship not docked, even in the Commonwealth, remains a concern. But it was an extraordinary opportunity, as has been said, to tour that ship and see the amazing work being done there. So reflective of everything else going on from a research standpoint in Woods Hole. And this is certainly the appropriate home, one would think. So more work remains to be done there. Also, we had some recent publicity, and I just wanted to acknowledge and thank Senator Terry Murray for the recent publicity and the support of the Transportation Bond Bill. That's bringing several million dollars to the Town of Falmouth for Main Street.
Like 16?
Improvements, approximately 16. Thank you, Madam Chair. Well-needed. It's a project that's been worked on for some time behind the scenes, as Selectwoman, Sleckman Flynn is well aware. And we're very gratified with the support of Senator Murray's office, as well as our other legislators, Tim Madden and David Viera, for their support on the bond bill side as well. And I think it certainly didn't escape many of us that a number of other communities were not quite as vigilant in terms of the work behind the scenes to essentially recapture taxpayers' dollars for such an important improvement in the Town of Falmouth. And it comes at an excellent time. That would represent upgrades to the town's water lines underlying Main Street. And what could be a better capper than the recent vote in water and wastewater both by residents here, and our ability in the not-too-distant future to upgrade some of the oldest water lines in the town, those underlying Main Street. So we're very gratified about that. And I want to express my appreciation to the board for your support and guidance in affirming a number of months ago that we transmit that project list to Senator Murray's office, and Senator Murray working with our other legislators in making that happen. It's very gratifying to bring that back to Falmouth.
Can I just say one thing about that?
Yes, please, Madam Chair.
Because it's a very special thing for me, is that Transportation Bond Bill. Because the Senate President's Office calls every year around January, February. And when the call comes, you have like two weeks to get it in. And if you don't have it all put together, you're out of luck. Julian knew this when he first came here, that it takes almost a year to really put the projects together, because you have to work with EPW, you have to, I mean, everything. So it all got put together. And when the call came, Falmouth was ready with all the projects and everything you can think of. You should just put up there because you never know. And as it turned out, so many of the towns in the Plymouth Municipal District didn't put anything in. So we ended up with 16-point-some-million dollars out of it. It was just absolutely amazing.
Thank you, Julian.
But she will not be the Senate President next year, so we'll be at the bottom of the list, probably.
It was a great example of teamwork.
It's a great example of teamwork and everybody working together to make it happen.
Absolutely.
And that's how we got the money. Because we were ready, prepared. When the call came, this is what we want. And that's how it goes. So, thank you very much, yes.
Well, thank you to the board for that leadership. And Pat, you and I talked about that project and that process, as you all know, on several occasions. So it's particularly gratifying that we had the opportunity for Senator Murray and our other legislators to, you know, carry the load for us. We just presented the information all timely, as you noted. You're either there, or you missed the opportunity. So that's what it's all about.
Even one of our staff members, I saw Lance somewhere, you guys got all that money. And I said, yes, we did. And he said, and then you told me about the towns that hadn't put anything in, because they just didn't plan ahead. And you don't have a lot of time, and you can't put projects like that together in two weeks. It takes a lot of time, especially when they're water mains. And we were talking two or three years ago about a 100-year-old water main on Main Street, and how, and it was just going to cost a lot of money, but we were going to have to do it. So it got into the Transportation Bond Bill.
And if I might just interject, what we're reminded of here on the Cape is that we are a net contributor to taxes in the Commonwealth. So here's an opportunity where basically we're recapturing the dollars that Falmouth residents and businesses and others are sending to Boston. So it's a great opportunity to begin to receive some of those benefits.
Heather?
No, just a comment. It really is that the town's ability to pull that type of material together is a testament to the strong and robust capital planning process locally. But even when the funds are not available locally, we identify the needs and we project them out for future years, so that when something like this comes up, we're able to pull from that resource. The narrative is there. The Public Works Department does a great job every year recasting those needs, supporting us in developing that, even though they know they won't get the funding that year. But it really demonstrates the value of the capital plan when something like this comes along.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, it's, everybody was ready.
Indeed. And Madam Chair, if I could defer to my colleague to give a little update on the streetlights.
Oh, sure.
Heather could do that.
Yes.
Very briefly and more on the mundane side, in terms of just the town's processes. We have a follow-up meeting with some local residents on the 9th, excuse me, 9:00 AM on this coming Thursday. We've made a lot of information requests and have some more data to take a look at. We've identified all of the CFL Admiral Hat lamps in the historic districts, as well as those lamps that are currently outside of the districts. There's about 189, 190 of those lights. 119 of them are within the districts. So there may be some of those that you can take a look at that are outside of the district. So there may be some of those that you can take a look at that are outside of the district. We've asked for a maintenance schedule from Siemens, what it will cost to maintain those lights if we choose to keep them, a maintenance log historically about how much active maintenance those lamps have needed. We've asked Siemens to identify a process, should the town choose to seek N-Star, to amend the tariff for those lamps to allow us at some future point to put LED lamps in them. We've asked the Police Department to inventory all the Admiral hats, which they have done, and physically observe them. They've identified a good number of them that are currently not operable. As a result, we followed up with Siemens and asked them to check each of them, determine whether it's just a bulb replacement or whether those lamps are in failure. So hopefully, we'll have to you, well before August 1st, is sort of a three-level option. Option one is to pursue the LED process that you currently have been involved with that is complete throughout the Cape, awaiting our decision on these remaining lamps in Falmouth. You could choose to keep all the Admiral CFL lamps that exist and pursue some variety of alternatives, or you could keep some of them and relamp other stuffs. We'll have that hopefully nailed down in the next few weeks. Really good feedback from the neighbors, some good ideas, and we'll continue to pursue them and flesh them out and allow the board to make a judgment, which does need to be made by about the 1st of August.
I've heard feedback from the residents throughout the meeting and really appreciate the way you ran that meeting. And it was very, very productive.
It was, very productive.
Congratulations, Heather.
Thank you.
Thanks, Heather. Thank you, Madam Chair. Your adjournments conclude.
Second, all those in favor, say aye. And we'll see you on July 14th.